Good evening, Cedar Falls. Welcome to our regular council meeting for August 1st, 2022. I'll now call the meeting to order with a roll call from Madam Clerk.
Schultz.
Here.
DeBoer.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Harding.
Here.
Ganfield.
Here.
Sires.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
All members present, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of July 18?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? Any from the public? If they're all in favor, say aye.
Mr. Mayor, there would be discussion. I'm on the, oh, sorry, I'm on the council meeting. Never mind.
For the minutes?
I misspoke.
Okay, so, all in favor for the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that does pass. Oh, I'll leave that. That does pass, and do we have any agenda revisions tonight, Madam Clerk?
I have no agenda revisions, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. For special presentations tonight, I do have a proclamation to read. Every year, I've read this at the request of Nikki Morrisey, who is a sufferer of gastroparesis. And so I will do so again this year. She's not able to join us this evening, unfortunately. But to read the proclamation, it states, "Gastroparesis Awareness Month, August 2022. Whereas gastroparesis is a paralysis of the stomach which causes extreme pain, nausea, vomiting, early seedy, and can lead to serious complications such as malnourishment, dehydration, extreme weight loss, overwhelming fatigue, a severe decrease in quality of life, and in some cases even death. And whereas gastroparesis is a chronic illness affecting more than 5 million people in the United States, yet public awareness and medical understanding of this condition is severely lacking. And whereas no known cure exists for gastroparesis, and the few treatment options available can lead to even more serious complications such as sepsis. And whereas those affected by gastroparesis seek more research, additional treatment options, and effective medications, better patient support, and hope for a future free of the constant suffering and pain. And whereas the people of Cedar Falls can benefit from increased awareness of the devastating effects of gastroparesis for the good of public health and to better support those inflicted with this disorder. Therefore, I, Robert M. Green, Mayor of City of Cedar Falls, do hereby designate August 22, excuse me, August 2022, as Gastroparesis Awareness Month in Cedar Falls, and I do hereby encourage residents to learn about gastroparesis and to seek out ways to support our neighbors who suffer from this debilitating illness. Signed this 11th day of July, 2022, Mayor Robert M. Green." And our thoughts are with Nikki and her family. She's continuing to suffer from gastroparesis. So with that, I'll open up the floor for public forum. Well, speakers will have one opportunity to speak for up to five minutes on topics relative, relevant to city business. Does anyone from the public wish to speak for public comment or public forum tonight? Yes, Ms. Beach. Name and address for the record, please, ma'am, and the floor is yours for five minutes.
Is that good, bad, or okay? Thank you much. Rosemary Beach, 518 Sage Road, Western Home Facility. I'm here to talk about bathrooms again, and I did catch at the last, the end of the very last meeting, when I got home, that it had been decided to turn it over to the people working on those kind of things. But I'm not so sure that everybody heard it because it was about the very end. So I'm just going to read down this piece of paper of things I have brought as I've been looking for bathrooms. I will say that I think we need nice bathrooms in this city of 40,000 people. Okay, first of all, Little Red Schoolhouse has a bathroom facility. Has one stool. It was leaking two weeks ago. I don't know about today. It has a bad, bad, bad front door. It's a metal front door, and it's full of holes. And it's heavy. There's a sink in there, but it's absolutely the bare minimum. And that, that facility, I understand, belongs to the city, so that it's in their care. It's not in another place for that. State Street. The public only can use the Plaza bathrooms when they're having something there. They're nicely new, and that would be not if they, nice if they were open. But only if there's entertainment, the sign goes off the front of it. You don't know that there's a bathroom anywhere there. There's a gray door. But it is functional, and it is new, and it is nice. The Banshell, when something's happening, and at the Banshell has bathrooms, which I don't know whether the city takes care of those or how they're done. I'm not sure of that. The Theater, when there's plays such as that. The area by the cupcakes, and I, the building next door. Many of us thought that that was a public bathroom for a long time in the back. Now, it is, the doors are held together with a chain, so you can't get in there and find out what they're doing or who has it. I don't know who that bathroom belonged to, but it was used frequently as Main Street people use that. So, and I don't know what shape it's in. The library, the community center, when those doors are open, we have bathrooms. Now, I would say for some of those things that we've already done, that's just about the end of the real bathrooms in Cedar Falls, and I would like to see something good about that. And if you do something about it, I would encourage you to not use children's style, children's height stools. I don't know about you, but my knees hurt going down any further than I have to do to get on a stool. And most, a lot of these, the places where they're put in those kind of places, use these little tiny stools. I think that is not a nice thing to do. Then, let's see, also, when going through this whole thing, I also think there should be a changing area for children. I think that's a facility that we should offer somewhere in a nice, nice bathroom area. Then, I would like to see that the doors to whatever you do are not so heavy that you can't get in with a walker without getting hit on your backside or caught on your heels. If you try the building, you try the bathroom windows, their windows, doors in here, they are about that heavy. And the libraries are too. I don't know where they thought people were going to go in those bathrooms that they had to have such heavy doors, but there's a lot of that going on also. And I realize I came and said this, some of this, but I wasn't too sure of some of the thought processes you might have. I just think that we are a better community than what we are offering for the people coming to visit us and for our own people here. I know that if-
One minute remaining, Rosemary.
Is it?
One minute remaining.
Oh, okay. It is, if you're needing a bathroom and you really want to go shopping in that next store, you're not going to do it. You're going to go home, or you're going to go to some store you know and say, "I really need your bathroom." I just think we're a better community. I appreciate that it was brought up last week, and I think it's something that Mayor is looking into, and I would hope that I could keep track of it and not come every week and, every other week and tell, talk to you about bathrooms. Thank you much.
Thank you, Rosemary, and those committee meetings will be open to the public. They occur right before the council meetings. So you're welcome to join us when that's on the agenda for those. And a question for the city, Little Red Schoolhouse, is that property, is that owned by the city as well as the Little Red Schoolhouse itself? Or is that, I understand sometimes you have arrangements with other groups who own-
I believe it is owned by the city.
Okay, does anyone else wish to speak for public comment, in public forum? Is seeing none? Well, I believe you already have the answer. That is owned by the city. Okay, so with that, looking at end of public forum, if no other speakers wish to speak, then move us over to Special Order of Business, which Item 3 is a public hearing on the proposed plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the 2022 Sidewalk Assessment Project Zone 5. And we have Mr. Dave Wiki with us tonight, a city engineer, to talk about this project. First, is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
So moved.
Second. Motion seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes. And Madam Clerk, do we have any written communications filed?
I have no written communications on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. So, Mr. Wiki, the floor is yours for staff comments.
All right, thank you, Mayor. City Council, tonight's public hearing is for the 2022 Sidewalk Assessment Project Zone 5. By city code, state law, Department of Justice, and Americas with Disability Acts, the city is required to inspect deficient sidewalk panels each year. The city is divided into 10 different zones, and we go out and we inspect one zone per year. Project involves a replacement of the deficient sidewalks that are adjacent to various property owners, and the project will replace the deficient sidewalk for the adjacent property owner, and then that cost gets assessed back to the property owner. The total estimated cost for construction for this project is $40,591. Once the replacement has been completed, the division will, the engineering division will submit a bill to the city clerk. The clerk's office will then send notice of the bill to the property owners, and then the property owners then have 30 days to, to pay that bill without any interest or penalties. If the property owner doesn't pay that bill, then that cost gets applied to their taxes in the form of the assessment. That's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wiki. With that, I'll open it up for public comments. Does anyone wish to speak on the, during this public hearing for the plan specifications, the form of contract for the sidewalk assessment project? Okay, seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing for this item and take us to 3E, which is the resolution approving and adopting the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the 2022 Sidewalk Assessment Project Zone 5. Is there a motion to approve?
Submit.
Motioned and-
Seconded.
Seconded. All right, council discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just like to double check. I apologize. I'm not familiar with the earlier notifications. Property owners are able to repair it on their own dime. If we gave them notice, correct, of the deficiency, they could correct that? Or is this the only option for that mitigation?
No, we do send out letters and give them the option to repair it on their own, so they do have a timeframe in which they can do that.
So these 209, I can't remember the measurements there. This is the ones that we're not already repaired, so that we have to do it and then assess the property owners. Perfect.
Thank you. And, and also just note, because I've had those questions in the past too, it certainly isn't punitive that the property owners are, this is happening. Some want to do it that way because it's just, they don't want the hassle of trying to repair it themselves. So I've been in that position myself. Okay, any other-
Can I ask a follow-up question to that?
Please, please.
Are we, do we give the people the estimated cost on what it would be so that they can look to see whether they can get it done cheaper, or which might be the better option?
We do provide an estimated cost of what that replacement would cost them if they were to do it on their own. So when they go out to get quotes, they have a pretty good idea of what to expect.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, then it's been a motion to approve the, adopt the plans, specifications, form of contract, estimate of cost for the Sidewalk Assessment Project Zone 5, and this requires a roll call vote.
Sires.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
DeBoer.
Aye.
Cruz.
Aye.
Harding.
Aye.
Ganfield.
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I would just ask, we have a staff member hiding right behind. If I, if you wouldn't mind moving to a different seat. Sorry about that. It's something I've thought about every week. It's a little distracting. Okay, so with that, let's go over to mold business, which Item 4 is passing ordinance 3414, amending Section 26118 of the Code of Ordinances by removing certain property located at 2209 North Union Road from the R1 Residence District and placing the same in the A1 Agricultural District upon its second consideration. Is there a motion to approve?
Submit.
Second.
Motion seconded. Open for council discussion. Had a chance last time around. Does anyone from the public want to speak on the item? Okay, I'm seeing none, so motioned and seconded, and requires a roll call vote.
Sires.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
DeBoer.
Aye.
Cruz.
Aye.
Harding.
Aye.
Ganfield.
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. So this district change is in its second consideration, and next council meeting will have the third consideration. At that point, it will, if it's approved, it will become a new ordinance. So we always give three readings on these. Next, we go over to the consent calendar, where these items will be acted on by a voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. And we're always happy to pull items if anyone wants. So we have Item 5 through 9. Does anyone, any council member want to approve one of these items?
Five.
Five, okay. Item 5. Does anyone from the public wish to pull an item from the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none? So I'll read the remainder. Item 6 is approving recommendations of the mayor relative to appointment of boards and, boards and commission members. 7 is receiving and filing a communication from the Civil Service Commission for, relative to a certified list for the position of Public Safety Officer. 8 is receiving the departmental month reports of June 2022. And then Item 9 is approving applications for beer permits and liquor licenses. Is there a motion to approve these items minus number 5?
It's moved.
Second. Motion seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that passes and brings us back to Item 5. This is receiving and filing, City Council Standing Committee minutes of July 18th relative to City Council meeting procedures, the Cedar Falls Roadbury Memorial Plaza, private shared parking requirements, and West 12th Street speed limit, Barnett Road to Union Road. Councilmember DeBir, you had a question or comment for that?
Well, on the Administration Committee, what I recalled being on the agenda was a discussion to rename the three committees. And the discussion went on to talk about renaming the Administration Committee to a much longer name, and it was discussed regarding grievances and that we really couldn't change it without opening up the contracts. And yet, it's talking in here on the minutes of actually going to six committees. Actually, we can't do that since that wasn't what the agenda item was. The agenda item was for renaming the committees.
So I would, I see the, the point. Looking at the minutes themselves, whether the minutes themselves are accurate, is this something that might be more appropriate for Item 10? And to bring it up when we actually discuss the, the approval of those procedures? Because I guess the question I've always asked for in the minutes is, are the minutes accurate of what was, what transpired in the meeting?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, councilor approves.
To Susan's point, I would say that what's stated here is not what we had a consensus to go forward with. Because we had the sticking point of opening up the union contract, is one thing, among others. So what's stated here would be inaccurate as to what she said.
Okay, I view it. Yeah, I wasn't chairing the meeting, but for the rest of council, is, is that, I mean, that was my understanding, was the council decided it did want to pursue six committees.
That's my understanding, 4-3. Head nod. So.
Correct. I guess I would, Mr. Mayor, I would like to see if Attorney Rogers has any sentiment on whether this being a recommending body, if that agenda item does nullify the action that was taken by that committee by recommending a structural change rather than just a name change? To suit to Councilmember DeBir's point, I fully want to abide by what we have to, but I'm not sure, as a recommending body, if that one is a sticking point or not.
So the item up for discussion right now are, are the minutes? And whether or not those minutes are accurate, that would be the basis for objection. So any further discussion about the upcoming item to approve would be, at the time, we consider Item Number 10, the resolution approving. So, and I can't comment on the accuracy of the minutes. I didn't take the minutes or, or watch the meeting and make sure. So I don't have any comment on that, but unless there's an objection to the accuracy of the minutes, then I don't think it's appropriate to discuss problems with procedure about adopting the resolution at this point.
Okay, and we've, we've heard the, the concern that the, the minutes aren't accurate. So I think the, the simplest thing, if councils are willing to do it, is just to go to the vote for it. And if whoever thinks that the council minutes aren't accurate, just vote it down. And those that think it's accurate, vote it up.
Makes sense to me.
So- With that-
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
One other item on there, as to the completeness and succinctness of the minutes during the Community Relations and Planning Committee. I want to own that that one was less clear for staff to communicate to planning and zoning what we decided there. We put in the minutes that we were considering, including but not limited to location and time of day rules, but I think we also had more inclusion of disparity between adjacent parking and parcels without potential for adjacent parking, and some things of that nature that needed clarity. And quite frankly, I feel we ran out of time to be able to do that. I would like to ask, in whatever manner is necessary, that we have one more opportunity with the Community Relations and Planning Committee to confer exactly what it is we're asking planning and zoning to deliberate, because I don't think we gave them enough direction to be able to intelligibly argue. So before we kick this to planning and zoning, I'd beg the indulgence of the group to have maybe a 10 to 15-minute committee meeting to finalize what we're asking from PNZ so that we don't muddy the waters further. Is that fair to get a consensus on that at this point? Or is that out of order?
Yeah, so again, the question is, are the minutes themselves-
I think that they're not as inclusive as the discussion that night. So there is an inaccuracy that they didn't include pieces that should have been.
You, you could amend the minutes if you'd like.
In that vein, I guess I hesitate to move without having it written down, but I would move to amend the minutes from the Community Relations and Planning Committee to include that planning and zoning consider whether to include already existing public parking in their allowed shared parking requirement usage, and whether or not the shared parking should be contiguous or 100, 200, or 600 feet, to give them actual numbers to deliberate. That was discussed that night.
I'll second it.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me. So we're getting into council members sort of rewriting the minutes, and I don't think that's appropriate. The minutes, the, the design of the minutes is to capture generally discussion, general terms, and especially reflect what council's actions were on a vote. And so I would be a little nervous about us amending minutes without sitting down and, and, and going through the notes verbatim, word by word, because I don't want the minutes to be inaccurate because of that. No ill intent at all from anyone here. On Councilmember Ganfield's point, that sounds like a perfect referral item when we get there. It's just what you said, and refer it back to committee and have a go at it.
Okay. If that's the most proper way to do it, I would rescind my motion to amend.
Okay, so motion matron?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
To the point of Mr. Rogers, the actual language of the minutes is incorrect. Council members did not have a consensus. Because we had one saying 100 feet, we had a couple of us saying contiguous, we had others saying leave it the way it is, so there was not a majority vote to reach a consensus. So this is inaccurate. So the method of fixing that was with a referral, or you delete this, you just input council members did not have a consensus.
I think the best way to handle that might be for council to vote down passage of approval of that particular set of minutes for this time. Staff understands that council has some concerns about the accuracy. Bring back the minutes next meeting for council consideration for approval. I don't like trying to amend the minutes on the fly unless we have specific information in front of us.
Okay, so then for the approval of the minutes, we've got four separate topics covered in the minutes. Would, would council be opposed to voting to approve A, B, and C? And then having a second vote on whether to approve, or excuse me, A, B, and D, and then a second vote on whether to approve C, which is the shared parking requirements? Is that clean enough?
I'd be agreeable with that in line with-
So, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
What, what is in that? Because I'm, are we, we're talking about the-
What, what is in that? Cause I'm, I'm, are we, we're talking about the second paragraph of Community Relations and Planning Committee is what councilman Cruz is out, but where, what exactly is, it looks kind of broad. What, what needs to be taken out of there?
Could I speak to that, Mr. Mayor? What this is saying, it's given staff the go-ahead to go to planning and zoning with an extremely broad mandate and to have a discussion very broadly. And the referral months ago was very specific about different components. So, councilman Ganfield, myself, others, we didn't have a consensus. And we didn't want another bite at the apple. According to Mr. Rogers, we can do a referral to do so. So what we're doing is turning down that this is accurate for item 5C.
So it, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, councilor Dunn.
It says councilmembers consensus is to refer the shared parking regulations to planning zoning commission with consideration including but not limited to location and time of day rules for shared parking in downtown. Didn't we have the consensus to do that? It's pretty broad. I, I understand what you're saying, but like we've said, this is the minutes. We're gonna have a moment in item 10 to, it sounds like hash out what we're trying to hash out here. This is, what in these minutes is not correct?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
As chairman over that committee, I do agree that this, the minutes are correct, that we did gain a consensus to refer the shared parking discussion to planning and zoning. The concern I brought up, which we can address with a referral, is that these weren't inclusive enough as indicated by including but not limited to. So I would say, we did have a consensus of four, that it should go back to planning and zoning because we ran out of time to be specific. So I think we accept the minutes as written and I'll refer later for further discussion before we go to P&amp;Z.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, this is a question, uh, for Mr. Rogers or any staff. Minutes are designed to just be a snapshot, not, not specific items and hence the broad terminology of inclusive of but not limited to. Is that correct?
Right. Um, if we wanted a verbatim account of the, of the meeting, then we'd, we'd have every word, uh, we'd have a stenographer taking down everything. That's not the purpose of the minute. The minutes are to, a general, uh, statement about what occurred. Important thing being what council members acted on.
Fair, that makes sense.
I guess the question for me is, is, with the minutes as they're written, lead the staff in the wrong direction. And, and my sense is it wouldn't, since it says it's inclusive and you're, it sounds like you're gonna look to cover it, uh, in, in a referral. So, um, with that, I think, we, I think we have enough information to, to take a vote on it. Um, so, this would be then, I'd, I'd love, what I'd like to do, I think we have enough for the entirety, so to say, for receiving the minutes for all A, B, C, and D. Yes, I'll give that a try here. So, um, with motion on the floor is receiving and filing standing committee minutes relative to amount, council meeting procedures, Rotary Memorial Plaza, shared parking requirements, and the West 12th Street speed limit Barnett Road, drive to, to Union Road. So it's been motion and seconded and all.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I don't have a motion and a second.
Oh. Let's take a motion and a second, just to be on the safe side.
Well, I'll motion that we approve the minutes.
Second.
I apologize, I thought we'd covered that. Um, so motion and seconded and I've had the discussion, so all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so that, uh, does pass by voice vote and takes us, uh, over into the resolution calendar where, uh, these items will be acted upon by a roll call vote in a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Uh, does any council member request to pull an item 10 through 22?
Mr. Mayor, item 15, please.
15 for councilmember Ganfield.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Item 19, please.
19 for Simon Harding.
Number 10.
Okay, number 10 for Susan DeBurr. Okay, any others? Any from the public who wish to pull an item 10 through 22? Okay, seeing none? Then I'll read these remaining items. So 11 is a resolution approving and adopting amendments to the city's accounting policies and procedures and purchasing manual. 12 is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a second amendment to agreement for professional services with operation threshold for a CDBG CV3 funding relative to the CARES Act. 13 is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a service product agreement to Intercog for grant administration for the FY 23 CDBG funding project delivery and want to thank Intercog for their excellent work these past several years. 14 is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a service product agreement with Intercog for grant administration and technical services for the home investment partnership, uh, program funding project delivery. 16 is a resolution approving and accepting the contract and bond of Benton Sand and Gravel for the 2022 University Avenue BioCells Project. 17 is a resolution approving and accepting the contract and bond of Blacktop Service Company for the 2022 Seal Coat Project. 18 is a resolution receiving and filing the bids and approving and accepting the bid of Peterson Contractors in the amount of 2.7 million and some change there, being the only bid received for the Olive Street Box Culvert Replacement Project. And then, uh, skipping to tw, from 19 going to 20, resolution approving and authorizing execution of 30 owner purchase agreements and approving and accepting 30 temporary construction easements in conjunction with the Main Street Reconstruction Project. 21 is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a joint funding agreement for water resource investigations with USGS relative to the Cedar River Streamgate Station. And finally, the 22 is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a professional service agreement with Rittland and Cooper Landscape Architects for design services relative to the Sealy Park Improvements Project. Is there a motion to approve the resolution calendar minus items 10, 15, and 19?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
Sires.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
DeBoer.
Aye.
Cruz.
Aye.
Harding.
Aye.
Ganfield.
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And so, uh, going back to item 10 is a resolution approving and adopting revised city council meeting procedures. Uh, I'll note that, uh, this does require, as I understand it, five votes or five aye votes due to the rules of the, uh, the meeting procedures themselves in order to, to change the rules. So, uh, with that, uh, councilmember DeBurr had, uh, questions, comments on it? Close your hands, ma'am.
Go ahead and entertain the motion.
Oh, yes, let's entertain the motions. There's a motion to approve.
Summed.
Second.
Motion seconded and, uh, open for discussion. So councilmember DeBurr?
Well, one of my concerns was 6.4 where it now names one, two, three, four, five, six committees. We discussed at the last meeting, although it's not in the minutes, about why the police, because of the grievances, needed to be in the administration committee. But now you're having a separate police committee or public safety. Um, and that does, it doesn't seem appropriate since they're required by our contract to be in the administration committee.
Okay, and looking at that item, uh, there, make sure it's in here. So, um, when that was done, I understood from the comments that we wanted to maintain a separate administration committee to hear those items. And I believe that that's included in the document still.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, councilmember Ganfield.
If I can speak to councilmember DeBurr's point.
Certainly.
I believe the public safety committee, as I would hope it would be, to have a lot more close working relationship with the department, not just the grievance process, but the grievance process would still have to go to the administration committee, so it has to remain. The alignment with departmental names is a consistency that'll gain clarity for our residents as well as council members, myself included. So, I think the addition of the public safety committee will be helpful beyond just those grievance items. And quite frankly, the administration committee won't have to be, um, tasked with those items.
Well, we're all on, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Can I speak?
Please.
We're all on every committee, so it really doesn't matter what you name them. And, you know, we've, we've done it for a lot of years with the three committees and did very well. So I just think it's not necessary.
Okay. And, and just for clarity's sake, that administration committee, as I understood the discussion, it exists only in this new document to handle grievance hearings and things that are required by, by written, uh, note to have to be heard by administration. And, and it wouldn't have any other purpose except for those couple, those, those some items. And my understanding also is that the goal was to eventually move those topics out of administration committee so that we could eventually disband that entirely to only have the, the four, um, uh, department comparable committees and then committee of the whole, so five total. Um, any other questions or comments for that?
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to.
Yes, councilmember Ganfield.
Ask one item on item 17 in those meeting minutes. Um, for the council prevalence, I would like to maintain a simple majority of council members if that's not new, or I mean, if that is new in this document. So it reads today, "Any determination by a presiding officer may be reversed by a two-thirds majority of all members." I would like to see if that's a simple majority of all members, just to maintain, uh, check and balance there. Was that new language, do you recall? I did not go back and check.
I don't believe so. Just stand at ease for a moment, cause that's a big item.
While you look, I, I have a comment if it's okay?
Certainly.
A lot of times, the two-thirds is important just because that's the number if the mayor vetoes something, that would have to be utilized to override the mayor's veto then. So if it's a contentious item, oftentimes, uh, two-thirds is a, uh, more informational vote than just a simple majority. So that could be one of the reasons why they included it that way. That's the way I've thought of it at least.
And, yeah, and so in rule three, then this would be a, a change and certainly if you'd like to amend, we can change it back. Um, it says, under rule three, matters not covered, uh, any matters of procedure not covered by these rules shall refer to the presiding officer, shall decide the matter with the assistance and advice of the city attorney. Um, the decision of the presiding officer may be reversed by a majority vote of the council. So if you'd like to put forward amendment to change two-thirds to just, or just, actually just strike two-thirds.
Yeah, I would, I would like move to amend 1.7 to strike two-thirds.
Okay, so motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and seconded, any discussion?
Question.
Yes, councilmember DeBurr.
Would the only time that the presiding officer would be determining it would be because of a tie vote?
No, this, this is if, uh, the mayor can't vote at all if there's a tie vote. I, I have no voting authority. This would be interpret, if, if somebody wants to do something and I'm asking like, how many of you think this is a good idea, how many not?
Point of orders, possibly.
Yeah. So I'll, I could make a decision to say this, I believe this speaker's out of order. And then the council could say, no, we think he's perfectly in order and you can overrule me. So, the question is, does it take a two-thirds majority to overrule me or a simple majority? And I put it in here as, as two-thirds because I felt it was, it was on par with a veto. Like you're vetoing me and under a veto in the ordinance, it's a two-thirds.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
That's exactly the way I saw it. Um, when we're overruling someone on council, let's say someone's called out of order or the mayor calls someone out of order, I would really like to see more than a majority, just one. I'd really like to see at least two-thirds because that's, that's a big decision. So, I'm, I'm comfortable with the two-thirds. I can see the point of having just a majority, but on big decisions like that, some, sometimes two-thirds is more conclusive.
And I'll note too, during, like, two and a half years as mayor and then another two on council, I don't recall the mayor ever being like overruled on something. So for me, it's a minor point. We, we tend to do things by consensus. So, if there's weird questions like that that pop up. So I'm, I'm fine if you want to change it to a majority. I have no concerns there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I guess to follow up on my thoughts, with the wording of a supermajority, the mayor can control the council decision with a minority of the council members. So I think, as was stated, eliminating two-thirds would put it on par with consensus.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Um, so if it, I'll, I'll just bring it up then, is if it's okay to do the vote on the amendment at this point. So, uh, the amendment, this doesn't approve the item itself, item 10, but it's just to change, uh, item 1.7 where it states, uh, council prevalence in meeting decisions. Any determination by a presiding officer, so that's any meeting, uh, whether it's, uh, my, uh, this or at a standing committee meeting, any determination by a presiding officer may be reversed by a two-thirds majority of all members. This would strike two-thirds. Uh, so it would be, any determination by a presiding officer may be reversed by a majority of all members. So, uh, all in favor of making that amendment, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, so let's see, just show, show hands just to be on the safe side. Aye to, to change it to a simple majority, one, two, three, four, five, and to keep it as, uh, just, um, uh, the two-thirds majority, one, two. Okay, so that does pass to amend that item. So that would be included in the final approval. Um, are there any other, uh, changes requested?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, councilor Cruz.
For the section eight, council referrals, the word, the exigent, it's not really layman's language for simplicity for the public. And looking up the definition of exigent, it says pressing or demanding. So I would motion that we would have, instead of the word, the exigent circumstances, except for pressing circumstances. And then follow through on eight, four, and eight, five, replace the word exigent with pressing so the common person can readily recognize what the word is.
Okay, so for the amendment then, it's to change, uh, any word in here that says exigent. So I'm seeing eight, four, eight, five, and anywhere.
Eight, two.
Eight, two, yeah.
I'll second the amendment.
Okay.
Just so we have second.
Change to pressing, uh, from exigent to pressing. So, a motion and seconded, any additional discussion needed on that? I'm not seeing any concerns, same result. Um, so, all in favor of this amendment, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Aye.
Okay, so that, uh.
I'm sorry.
So, um, that does pass to change exigent to pressing. And any other changes needed or, or amendments requested?
Mr. Mayor, just for clarity's sake, I didn't want to cut off. Points four, six, and four, nine, um, are similar and they seem a little redundant. So I just wanted to get the council's take on, uh, which one should prevail, four, six, or four, nine, when it comes to gaining the floor. And the antiquated language in four, six says to me that we could strike it altogether. Um, four, six says, "When two or more members rise at once to speak at a council meeting, we no longer rise from our chair to stand while speaking." Um, and four, nine covers gaining the floor by requesting permission from the presiding officer. So I would move to strike four, six unless there was further relevance.
Okay, so motion, yeah, so it's amendment to strike four, six, uh, motion and seconded, any additional discussion needed? I've got no concerns about the change myself. Okay, the motion and seconded, uh, let's have a voice vote for changing this. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any, are nay, same sign? Okay, so we will remove that and that will, we'll clean it up a little. Um, any other changes requested?
Just a question for, um, Kevin Rogers or Mr. Rogers, Attorney Rogers, which, which title would you like today?
Anyone you'd like to use. No worries.
All right. Um, to Ms. DeBurr's point earlier, with, is there any legal ramifications of us voting on this resolution tonight? I, I, I don't think so, but I, I want to make sure we're in the clear based off of the, the discussion last time had renaming, but it did also mention including pu, rearranging by including public safety. So are we okay in that legal regard?
Yeah, the, the notice of hearing that would have included resolution on all of the rules, approval or disapproval of all the rules. So any, um, modification was, was, uh, the public was notified, you may be considering all of these rules, not just a few.
And I, and I listed that too in the cover memo, that I said, uh, this is an option or alternatively you may elect to do this other thing as well, so.
Just wanted to double check, make sure, so if we pass, it doesn't come back again.
Okay. Any other changes requested right now, keeping in mind that we can change it later on, of course.
Mayor?
Yes, councilor Cruz.
Um, possibly something to clarify here on 4.15 and 4.16, um, the presiding officer may enter into any discussion, which is pretty standard. The presiding, then 4.16 is saying the presiding officer's right to speak last, which on face value sounds okay, but then if what the presiding officer is saying triggers further comment from the rest of the council, they should have the opportunity to possibly rebut or refute or support what the presiding officer's final comments are. They may not have been said so far in the discussion.
So what would you want for an amendment then? Just to strike it?
Correct. I think that'd be the simplest. Strike 4.16.
Okay, and that is something that's just verbatim from our existing rules, rule 33. So it's been motioned, is there a second to strike that?
Excuse me.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, so as presiding officer, there has to be some mechanism stated for closing debate off. That, that decisions are presiding officers to make, which can be overruled by council if further discussion is needed. Um, I'd be worried about taking that out of the rules. We'd have to go to Roberts on closing debate when it's pretty clearly stated here, it's in the presiding officer. So, I just want to caution council on that. So I just want to caution council on that.
Mr. Mayor's solution?
Yes, please.
Well, that's 4.16.
Just take out the word, right to speak last. 4.16 can say the presiding officer has the right to close debate.
Yeah, yeah, the text doesn't really follow the title, does it very well, so I think that'd make it more sense, make it consistent with what the rule actually says. The title's a little misleading, I agree with you.
Okay, then I would, I would, since we haven't put forward the motion yet for amendment, I would suggest, make, well, let me, if I could suggest one first?
Okay.
Where it says, "Presiding officer's right to speak last," it might make more sense just to say then, "Closing debate," because otherwise it's going to say exactly what it says in the text. So, so rules, if I could propose, if somebody would be willing to motion it, rules, the new rule would be right to close debate, and then the presiding officer has the right to close debate. Would that be acceptable?
Yeah, I was just going to suggest, Mr. Mayor, to take out the bold-faced part, and then it says the presiding officer has the right to close debate.
Oh, I, isn't that? I like my first bolded sentence.
Right to speak last? What do you mean?
Yeah, so just, I mean, if, I just try to put always a title in front of it.
Well, make that bold-faced, okay. Take out the words, right to speak last, and then the next three words, let's see, the presiding officer, take out seven words.
Mr. Mayor?
I mean, it's.
Doesn't 4.17 talk about the closing of the debate, that the presiding officer closes the debate? So it's really redundant to say it again in 4.16, because it's in 4.17.
So 4.17 would say, "Closing debate, discussion, including public participation, shall be closed on any item by the presiding officer with the concurrence of a majority of members," which is how we do it, "except as provided by Rule 5.8, a call for the vote shall not close discussion if any member of the council still wishes to be heard, or the presiding officer determines that continued participation of the council will be helpful, excuse me, participation of the public will be helpful to the council." So Mr. Rogers, if we have that in, does that cover what we need to cover for closing the debate anyway?
It does, that's a great point.
Okay. Thank you very much. So we could entertain modifying 4.16, or just delete it entirely. So what's your pleasure?
I think my motion is still there to remove 4.16.
Second.
Okay, so remove 4.16, it's been seconded, any further discussion? I think it's pretty clear. So all in favor, say aye to the amendment?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, so that will be struck in the final version that we vote on. So any other changes? I think this is good, we, like, we want to get through to make it as clean a document as possible, so I appreciate these clarifications, and removal of any redundancies. Anything else for now? Okay, I'm seeing none, so it's been motioned and seconded to approve the adopted and revised council meeting procedures with the additions that have been added, and I won't read those unless council requests it. And this does require five votes, rather than two. Is there a final comment here?
I was just going to say, so moved, but we need roll call.
Okay.
On the table.
Yeah, all right, so motion and seconded, and this requires a roll call vote. Again, five votes, five affirmances required.
Sires?
Nay.
Dunn?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Nay.
Cruz?
Aye.
Harding?
Aye.
Gamfield?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-2, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And that takes us over to item 15, which is a resolution approving Highway 1, Highway Commercial Zoning District Site Plan for construction of a financial institution to be located at 1,000 Brandeis Boulevard. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, and open for council discussion. I think, Mr. Sires, you brought this, or Dustin, Councilmember Ganfield, you brought this forward.
Yeah, I'm in, I don't know if this is out of order to state, but I'm in favor of the plan, but as an employee and member-owner, I felt it necessary to abstain from the discussion and the vote.
Excellent, thank you.
I do have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
So I wanted to ask staff if they had a chance. I noticed in the, the mint, well, not the minutes, but the summary of the planning and zoning and the stuff I read, they were talking about changing some of the landscaping and stuff, and staff hadn't checked it out yet. Have we gotten that far to check it out? Has it been submitted? Where are we at with that?
Yes, they, we did check it out, and it does meet the ordinance requirements, so we're satisfied with that.
Okay, that was my only, my only concern, thanks.
Karen?
Councilmember Ganfield, or, excuse me, Councilmember Schultz, go ahead.
Could you review the, I see they have plans for, they would require 14 parking spots, but they're going to build 32? Is that just their choice, or?
Yeah, we did talk to them about that there was excess of parking here, but it is totally their choice, they know better about what their parking needs than, so they chose to put in that many parking spaces.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Any from the public? Okay, seeing none, then it's been motioned and seconded to approve a Highway 1, Highway Commercial Zoning District Site Plan for construction of a financial institution at 1,000 Brandeis Boulevard. Motion and seconded, and requires a roll call vote.
Sires?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Harding?
Aye.
Gamfield?
Abstained.
Motion carries 6-1, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So next is item 19, which is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a supplemental agreement, number one, to the professional services agreement with both infrastructure and environment for additional services relative to the Center Street Corridor Streetscape project. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, Councilmember Harding, you had a question or comment?
Yeah, I just had a question for staff about the supplemental agreement. Was the supplemental agreement originally intended, why a supplemental agreement, and not just with the original agreement? So some more information.
So the supplemental agreement, just it supplements the original agreement for additional services that were required for this project. So there was some, not in the original scope, was some of the right-of-way legal documentation that was required for the attainment of temporary easements, and there was some additional design elements that had to be included. So for, for some of those elements, a supplemental was required to supplement the original agreement.
Okay, and it says, number one, I'm assuming, obviously, that's because it's the first one, it's not intended to have a number two at all, or is it just standard procedure that you name it number one?
Yeah, we just sequentially go one, two, three. So this is the first one after the original agreement, so that's why it's labeled supplemental one.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from comment, or from council, or from the public? Okay, seeing none, then it's been motioned and seconded to, as a resolution approving and authorizing execution of the supplemental agreement, number one, to the PSA with both infrastructure and environment for additional services relative to the Center Street Corridor Streetscape project. Motion and seconded, and requires a roll call vote.
Sires?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Harding?
Aye.
Gamfield?
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and that takes us out of the resolution calendar and over into ordinances. Item 23 is passing an ordinance amending Chapter 23, traffic and motor vehicles of the Code of Ordinances, relative to electric vehicle charging parking spaces upon its first consideration. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion and seconded, and do we have any council questions or comments on this?
I have a question.
Yes, please, Councilor Cruz.
I noticed when I drove by there, there's no sign as to how long they can park there, so I was curious, how do they pay for it? Is, is, do you put a credit card in to pay for it?
My understanding is they can do credit card or an app. It sounds like the app is the more popular one that people use, but I think they can do either one.
And how, how many hours can they be there? Because I think in the parking spot beside it, we have a limited amount of time.
So those parking spaces right there, 24-hour, right there, so in this case, there's no limit on this one either. Now, I think, and Jason and Jackie can remind me, we were kind of on this meeting with CFU, I think they have, if you go over a certain amount, but I can't remember what the amount is, they have a charge, they give you seatbelt utilities, right, a dollar?
Yeah, so basically, it depends on what kind of vehicle you have, and how long it needs to be charged. If it's eight hours and it's fully charged, the app will notify you on your phone that your car is fully charged. At that point, there's a $1 an hour charge on that vehicle for taking that spot and not charging.
Okay, so when it's not being charged, you're still getting charged for not charging. And how, has it been paying for itself?
So last year, so they did it on a calendar year, so they gave us a report back in February of 2022, so for '21, the net amount was 300, about $347 was the net revenue. So it was the revenue over the expenses.
Over the expenses. And then one other quick question, you mentioned in the report that you've had problems with people pulling the, the second cord across the parking lot, or across the sidewalk. Well, that's a private parking lot, correct? Does, is there anything in our ordinance that would fine them for, for doing that? Because even if we do the second spot, that, that doesn't stop them from still doing that bad behavior.
We had talked about that, whether we have something, whether it's, you know, obviously a safety concern, blocking the sidewalk, I think there's, you know, maybe ways we can address it, but one of the things I think we did do, and Jackie can correct me, is that I think we gave notice to that person who we thought maybe was doing that to the vehicle, and I think they have changed their behavior and have not been doing that, is that correct, Jackie?
That's correct.
Yeah, so our hope was, is just really let them notify, you know, notify them, and hope that they're not going to do it anymore. But our hope, obviously with this ordinance, is by creating that second space, there'll be less need for someone to run that cord, you know, across the way. So we, we do think there's been a little confusion, when there's been one space but two cords, maybe that's been a little confusing, so I think this will help.
And it doesn't say anything about fines, but is there a fine if a person parks there and isn't an electric vehicle?
Correct.
I don't, does it say the amount, though?
It would be subject to what the parking fines are, so that would be your standard parking fee, parking fine, $15.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Councilor Cruz.
Just curious, what percent of the day or night is this filled, or charging, or being used?
So the reports that they've provided is show that the average is four hours, daily average is four. But if you look at the report, it can range from eight hours to one hour to two, I mean, it's all over the board. They just, like, for the month of June, I pulled up the report, and it just shows the average is four hours a day.
Then where is the next nearest public charging location? Anybody have an idea?
There's one at single speed, and, or by the.
Public, public charging location, there wouldn't be one. There's, there's some on private property.
I have a question.
Councilor.
And you can call me out of order if this is too far off, and I'll ask on staff updates, but on private, I saw someone plugged into a street, like a lamp, that wasn't necessarily a street lamp, is that? I, I'm not kidding, is that legal? Is that something that, that you can do to plug in your car?
If I think I know where you're talking about, that's private property.
So that's, that's, okay.
That particular location, yes, sir.
Okay, I was just curious, I'd never seen it before, thanks.
Okay, any other questions or comments about the ordinance in front of us? Seeing none, any from the public? Okay, so with that, it's been motioned to pass the ordinance amending Chapter 23, traffic, motor vehicles of the Code of Ordinances, relative to EV charging parking spaces upon its first consideration. It requires a roll call vote.
Sires?
Nay.
Dunn?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Harding?
Aye.
Gamfield?
Aye.
Six voting aye, one voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and that brings us over to bills and claims. Is there a motion to approve bills and claims for August 1st?
Second.
The motion and seconded, any discussion with council? Any from the public? Okay, motion and seconded, and requires a roll call vote.
Sires?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Harding?
Aye.
Gamfield?
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, that takes us over to council referrals. Does any councilor have a referral they wish to bring forward?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Ganfield, go ahead.
Yep, I'd like to refer to the Community Relations and Planning Committee, a no more than 15-minute discussion on honing exactly what we're asking, planning and zoning, excuse me, to deliberate at their next meeting.
Okay, second. Motion and seconded, any additional discussion needed?
I guess.
Yeah, Councilor Cruz.
I would question whether 15 minutes might not be enough, and committee meetings start generally 5:30, 5:45, I don't know.
Would you like to amend to 30 minutes, then?
I would just like to amend it so that there's no time limit, and we have a discussion.
Okay, so the amendment.
Fair point, I'll take the friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment to have no time limit. Okay, so with that, any other discussion? So it's been motioned and seconded, want to read that to us, Madam Clerk?
Motion and seconded to refer to the Community Relations and Planning Committee, clarification of the referral to P&amp;Z.
Okay, motion and seconded, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so that does pass, and will be referred to committee. Any other referrals tonight? Okay, seeing none, then I'll bring this over to staff, or, excuse me, city council updates. Do you have any council updates this evening?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Ganfield.
Don't want to monopolize the whole night, but I did want to speak really quickly to Ms. Beach's concern. I did visit with the owner of the old Scratch Cupcake rebuilding, when Natalie owned it. She had that restroom attached to Scratch Cupcakes, open and available, and never really charged anybody. It is public, excuse me, it is private property, and the new owner doesn't have it open while they're being remodeled. I don't think has plans to open that up either. Just wanted to make sure that was clarified for those folks that are watching, that that has never been public restroom space, and we did already successfully refer to have a discussion about getting a handle on restrooms downtown. That was the other one there. I also heard from a resident today that was asking for an update, and I'd asked Mr. Shragi if he wouldn't mind providing a timetable update on the construction at Cedar Heights, Huntington, and Viking. I'll just kick that to him for staff updates, but other than that, I don't have anything further.
Okay, thank you. Any other updates?